Five fifteen on the twenty-fifth of February. We're in the Tom Baker Room of the Bismarck City County Building. This will be the Board of City Commissioners' regular meeting. We'll start momentarily, but first if we can have Captain Stanton give us invocation, and then after that, we're going to have Troop Six lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, we come before you today. We're thankful for this day, thankful for the beautiful weather, for the rain, for our crops, for the bountiful resources of North Dakota. You've blessed us mightily, and we're thankful for that, for your provision. We pray now for this meeting, and pray your blessing upon it. We ask for wisdom from the commissioners to transact whatever business comes before it, and we're just thankful, God, to be here today. We just ask it in your name. Amen.
Amen. And if Xander and Lucas from Boy Scout Troop Six could come forward to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Attention. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And gentlemen, I understand you'd like to have an opportunity to maybe give us a little history of Troop Six, so before we get our meeting started, would you do that, please?
Yes, sir. Good evening, everyone. My name is Lucas Duchuk, and I would like to thank you, Mayor Schmitz and commissioners, for the opportunity to take a few minutes to inform you and the citizens of Bismarck about one of the oldest youth organizations in the city, Boy Scout Troop Six. Originally chartered by the National Council in nineteen seventeen and sponsored by First Presbyterian Church of Bismarck, Troop Six has held a continuous charter for nearly a hundred and eight years and is very proud of the distinction of being the oldest Boy Scout troop in the state of North Dakota. First Presbyterian Church has been the sponsor of Troop Six for all these years, providing a meeting place, adult leadership, and financial support. Since the founding over a century ago, Troop Six has had over a thousand young men experience the great outdoors, learn numerous skills, and make lifelong friendships. Scouts of Troop Six have distinguished themselves in a number of professional capabilities, and more importantly, as engaged parents and members of their communities. Troop Six is proud to have a roster of eighty-five young men achieving the Eagle Scout rank, including five men who earned the Eagle Scout rank and went on to serve in World War II. Troop Six is proud of over a century of service and adventure and looks forward to continuing a great tradition to the city of Bismarck. There is currently a display of Troop Six memorabilia at the Bismarck Veterans Memorial Library, and we would encourage folks to stop by and check out the display. Now I would like to introduce Xander Huntington, who will brief the commission on some of Troop Six's recent activities and projects.
Thank you, Lucas. Since its founding in nineteen seventeen, the scouts of Troop Six have enjoyed many outdoor adventures and service projects for the Bismarck community and the state of North Dakota. Canoe trips on the Missouri, Knife, Cheyenne, and Little Missouri rivers, hikes along the Matahae Trail in the North Dakota Badlands, bicycle rides along the Lewis and Clark Trail, winter camping and Zero Hero outings in the Turtle Mountains, and countless weekend- and week-long camping outings at North Dakota State Parks and other in-state and out-of-state locations. Summer camps at Hart Butte Scout Reservation and Medegoshi Scout Camp in North Dakota, Camp Wilderness and Many Point Scout Camp in Minnesota, Lewis and Clark Scout Camp and Medicine Mountain Scout Camps in South Dakota have all provided lifelong memories of being in the great outdoors. Troop Six has also recently had high-adventure trips to the Philmont Scout Ranch and the Northern Tier High Adventure Canoe Base. Troop Six remembers to do a good turn daily by participating in countless service projects. Highway cleanup efforts for over twenty-five years, serving meals at the Dream Center, scouting for food, annual food drive, placing reeds for the Reeds Across America program, and assisting First Presbyterian Church with the Breakfast with Santa and other activities are just a few of the more recent projects that we have done. Troop Six is proud to be part of Bismarck, the Bismarck community, and look forward to another century of outdoor activities and service to the community. And as a thank you, we would like to present each of the members a little gift for allowing us to be here tonight.
Thank you. And thank you, and thank you for all the work you do in the community and showing good leadership. All right, we'll call our... Right into the mic. All right, we'll call our meeting in order if we can call roll.
Commissioner Risch?
Here.
Commissioner Zanker?
Here.
Commissioner Connolly?
Here.
Commissioner Cleary?
Here.
Mayor Schmitz?
Here. At this point in time, it is the opportunity for public comment. Public comment is restricted to items on the consent agenda or the regular agenda excluding any public hearing items. Is there anyone who wish to speak? Please come forward, state the topic and your name, and sign in. A second call for public comment. A third and final call for public comment. Hearing and seeing no one coming forward, public comment period is now closed. Commissioners, the consent agenda is up first, but I would like to pull for discussion item J. One, the water service contract with South Central Regional District. So, that's my request. Is there any other considerations to the consent agenda?
I would move to approve, except to pull J. One for discussion.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call roll.
Commissioner Zanker?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner Cleary?
Yes.
Commissioner Risch?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. Item J. One, the question I have, and it's probably as much as anything as a formality, but when I look at the contract and I look at paragraph seven, wow, let's start back. Actually, if I start with paragraph two, the term of the contract, which is for thirty years, starting retroactive to Jan. One of 2025, and then paragraph seven states what the rate is, and I'm questioning why we have a rate that's set for thirty-five years. That seems like an awful long time, and if that's the intention, I question it because it doesn't seem like we're being fair to the rest of our users.
I got this. Mayor Commissioners, you wasted no time on getting me up here for the first time, so... So, a little history about this. We've had a contract with South Central since nineteen sixty-six. Originally, that was a forty-year contract. And in 2019, we redid that contract with them because of our rate study that we had done, so we wanted to update it. It was the easiest way to redo that contract. In that contract, we had forgotten the clause of a thirty-nine-point-seven cent reduction based off of their initial pay-in of, it was almost two-point-three million originally into being part of our system. So, that was forgotten in that nineteen contract, and that's why what you have before you today is a revised one to include that language in there. So, to address the rates, in the bottom of the first paragraph in section seven, it does say that our rates will be increased every year based on the percentage of the rates that we charge to our public, or we have the option occasionally to go in and evaluate the rates and make sure that they are set accordingly for that. So, they are variable, they will increase as the contract goes.
Okay. I would probably just word this paragraph differently?
Sure, we certainly can do that.
Whether we do it now or not, but it would seem like where the rate is stated, we should indicate right there that it's adjustable based upon something rather than later in the contract or later in the paragraph, because as I read it and went through it, that's what threw it out, and I just wanted to make sure it's clear, so that if someone else in the public read this and only read the new, that part, it looks concerning. So, Julie, if we could adjust that to move that the rate is adjustable, whatever the factors are, to that first sentence, then I'm fine with it.
And just to, Mayor Commissioners, thank you, Michael. Not a kid. You hit the first strike, I'll give you that. So, and just to, a little bit more information on that, I, as when I first took over the portfolio, that was my first curveball, so to speak, being a baseball guy. And they wanted to just extend it another forty years from that date, and that was not amenable to me or to the commission at that time, too. So, just full disclosure, they wanted another twenty, excuse me, twenty years, I think it would have been, onto that thirty-five, and that was not acceptable, so.
So, I just, I want, A, I appreciate just being able to have the conversation, and just clarification is most important to me, so that someone else down the road doesn't read it and get us stuck, so. And I knew Michael was prepared, because Jason told him I was going to ask for it, so thank you for being prepared, and we can...
You good with that?
Yes. Yes, we have language from the 2019 contract. I think we can just use one sentence from that and just move it up to the first part of section seven within this contract.
Okay. Okay. So, then I would accept...
I'll make a motion to approve as per the discussion to clarify the contract per the mayor's request.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call roll.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner Cleary?
Yes.
Commissioner Risch?
Yes.
Commissioner Zanker?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. And thank you for listening to me. Regular item, regular agenda item A, public hearing on ordinance sixty-six oh seven, repeal of Title eleven point one industrial pre-treatment program ordinance, adoption of eleven point two wastewater industrial pre-treatment program ordinance, and amendment of Title eleven utilities to charge, to change references from Title eleven to point one to Title eleven point two in the city of Bismarck quota ordinances. Do we want to make an introduction at all, or...
Mayor Commissioners, I'll just maybe, first of all, I just want to, I want to, there's a few city partners I want to thank. I want to thank the Bismarck Mandan Chamber EDC, because former director closely reached out for them with Michael's assistance, and we put some small groups together, advertised it to the stakeholders. Paul had some meetings, had some individual one-on-ones. I know that it's not a real hot topic, industrial pre-treatment, but we, I would say that staff went over and above to make sure that we've communicated this. This is our third meeting in a row that we've discussed it. I just want to give the, I just want to give a shout out to that group just for helping us get that, get that done, because it is important for us for wastewater management scenario. With that, other than that, I think we could just open the public hearing and go, sir.
Okay, that's fine with me. So, this is a public hearing. Anyone who wish to speak to this change to our ordinance, please come forward. A second call for public comment. A third and final call for public comment. Hearing and seeing no one coming forward, the public comment period is closed. Commissioners, what are your wishes?
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call roll.
Commissioner Cleary?
Yes.
Commissioner Risch?
Yes.
Commissioner Zanker?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. Item B is a public hearing on ordinance sixty-six oh eight to create an obstruction of law enforcement and discharge of duties, their duties ordinance. This is a public hearing. Anyone who would wish to speak to this, please come forward. A second call for public comment. A third and final call for public comment. Hearing and seeing no one, the public comment period is now closed. Commissioners, what are your wishes?
I'll just make a comment. Not long ago, we changed the resisting arrest ordinance, and evidently our new city attorney is, thinks this language is better, and it kind, Julie, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it kind of combines the two in the same ordinance?
No, so the resisting will remain the same, Commissioner? This is for...
Resisting or...
This is for obstructing.
Obstructing.
Right.
The language looks very similar.
It's similar, it's just with resisting, there would be physical force usually applied by the person being arrested towards the officer, which would include some resisting right there. This was, we stole language from other cities across the state to come up with this at the request of the police department.
Little research and development, that kid.
Don't need to reinvent the wheel.
Is there any other, or Commissioners, what are your wishes, I guess?
I'll move we approve as submitted.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call roll.
Commissioner Risch?
Yes.
Commissioner Zanker?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner Cleary?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. Next item C is a public hearing on ordinance sixty-six oh nine, a zoning map amendment from the A agricultural district to the RR residential district and a major subdivision final plat for Paradise Point subdivision. Go ahead, Ben.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the commission. The property the mayor just referenced is located southeast of Bismarck between Lincoln Road and sixty-second Avenue southeast and along the west side of Fifty-second Street southeast. Project area is comprised of eleven-point-one-three acres and is in one lot on one block. The future land use associated with the proposal is identified as urban reserve and the existing zoning is A agricultural. The requested action would allow for the construction of a single-family residential home along with any associated accessory structures. Planning and zoning commission did consider, excuse me, this request on January of twenty-twenty, at the January meeting of twenty-twenty-five, and no members of the public spoke for or against, nor did we receive any written testimony on the item. At the conclusion of the meeting, the planning and zoning commission did recommend approval of the zoning map amendment from the A agricultural district to the RR five residential zoning district as identified in ordinance sixty-six oh nine in your packets, as well as the major, associated major subdivision final plat for Paradise Point subdivision. Any questions that you may have regarding this item?
Commissioners, any questions? This is a public hearing. Anyone who wish to speak to this topic, please come forward.
Mayor, Landon, I'm with Swenson Hagan Engineering, representing burdens on this project. Nothing to add what Ben had presented. Do you just hear for any questions if you have them?
Okay. Commissioners, any questions of Landon?
Thank you.
Yep. Again, this is a public hearing. Anyone who wish to speak, please come forward. A second call for public comment. A third and final call for public comment. Public comment period is now closed. Commissioners, what are your wishes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call roll.
Commissioner Zanker?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner Cleary?
Yes.
Commissioner Risch?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. Next item D is a public hearing on ordinance sixty-six ten zoning map amendment for future land use amendment from parks and open spaces for land use to rural residential and parks and open, parks and open space land use, and a zoning map amendment from A agriculture to RR residential zoning district and a major subdivision final plat titled CSLAC subdivision. I think I got that wrong, did I not?
That is better than I could say it, Mayor, so thank you for introducing that. The property in question that the mayor just referenced is southeast of Bismarck in the southwest quadrant of the intersection of Sixty-sixth Street southeast and Apple Creek Road. Project area is comprised of three-point-six acres and is within one lot on one block. Future land use associated with the proposal is defined as parks and open space, and the existing zoning is A agricultural. Now, the requested action would allow the construction of a single-family residential home in this particular area. Planning and zoning commission did consider this request at the January twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five meeting, and again, no members of the public spoke in, for or against the item. I believe an applicant was available to answer questions about the item, but no written testimony was received. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the planning and zoning did, commission did recommend approval of the future land use plan amendment from the parks and open space to a combination of rural residential and parks and open space, as well as a zoning map amendment from the A agricultural to the RR residential as identified in ordinance sixty-six ten in your packets, and then the associated major subdivision final plat as well for CSLAC subdivision. Any questions that you might have related to this item?
Commissioners? Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone who wish to speak to this item, please come forward. Second call for public comment. Third and final call for public comment. Seeing and hearing no one, public comment period is now closed. Commissioners, what are your wishes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call roll.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner Cleary?
Yes.
Commissioner Risch?
Yes.
Commissioner Zanker?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. Next item E, consider request to hear insufficiency of protest and resolution necessity for street improvement district SI five-eight-five. Gabe?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. The item before you and up on the screen is our resolution, summary of protest for the resolution of necessity for our paving mill and overlay project SI five-eight-five. This was nine units, sent out just over a thousand letters or so to the affected or benefited properties, received twenty protest letters, but none of those were sufficient in any capacity in any one particular unit to protest the entire unit out. So, our recommendation would be to proceed with the project and to accept the insufficiency of protest for our annual paving project. Take any questions you may have.
Any questions for Gabe? Commissioner Risch?
Mr. Mayor, Gabe, I see we have twenty protests all over the place, because there's a lot of different projects. What's the threshold? It takes a lot more than that, more than fifty percent affected?
Mayor, Commissioner, Commissioner Risch, it's generally speaking fifty percent of the land is the threshold that we look at, so it might be one landowner, but if they have fifty percent of the land, that would be, one letter would be enough in that situation. There are situations, if it's entirely residential in nature, and if the city contributes a certain dollar threshold, or the state contributes a certain dollar threshold, that bar goes a little bit higher, recognizing that some other agency invested in this project as well as the general public. So, those situations, we might have a higher threshold, and we would bring those to your attention if we were at that sixty-three percent protest, but still, if the city put in ninety-nine percent of the money, it might be something we'd still recommend moving forward with. But in this situation, none of them met even the fifty percent general threshold.
Commissioners?
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call roll.
Commissioner Cleary?
Yes.
Commissioner Risch?
Yes.
Commissioner Zanker?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. Item F, excuse me, consider request to receive bids and award contract for tree pruning project TP twenty-twenty-five. Go ahead, Gabe.
Mayor Commissioners, I would have loved to sit here and present the bids for our tree pruning project, but we did not receive any bids on this project. We attempted to split out, what we've typically done every year is anytime we do our street maintenance projects, if there are some trees or limbs of those trees that project into the right-of-way underneath the curb that could be damaged by construction equipment, we have historically put that as part of a contract for subcontractor to perform that work as part of the larger paving project, you know, prime contractors' work items. This year, we tried to split that out early and separate, so that we can have that work commence now, actually, or as soon as practical to get to that tree pruning that has always been done as part of these projects, but get to that work earlier while the trees are still dormant. So, that was the attempt here. We failed in the sense that we didn't get any bidder, so what our recommendation will be is to split this work out into smaller, you know, quotable type work instead of a bigger, you know, sixty-thousand-dollar project. We'll split this out into two thirty-thousand-or-so quotes, go out for quotes for the various tree manage, management services companies that we have in town, and see if we can procure this work through that mechanism, and if we're unsuccessful in that, we would then just put this work back into the project like we had historically done, and it'll just get done in a different timeframe. So, that's the plan, and take any questions that you may have on that.
Any questions, Commissioners? Okay, I don't think you need, just proceed forward.
Okay, thank you much.
Item G, consider request to provide community development staff with direction on the ordinance for keeping, for the keeping of chickens. I think, Ben?
Sure, I can provide a little overview. Back in two thousand twenty-one, you might recall that, I'll just back up a little bit. Initially, we received a request from a citizen wondering if they could have, keep chickens within the corporate limits of the city of Bismarck. At that time, we did, we, there was no ordinance that allowed that. We do, at that, we had at that time and currently at this time, allow for chickens, up to ten chickens, hens, to be kept in the ETA residence. So, the resident as which, which is allowed by ordinance approached our planning and zoning commission, requesting staff to amend the ordinance to allow the keeping of chickens within the corporate limits. The planning and zoning commission felt that appropriate request and directed staff to do so. Upon, upon that direction, we assembled a stakeholder group, and I think it might be identified who was all on that group in the staff reports in your packets, but met with certainly folks from animal control and, and the animal advisory board and others, and developed an ordinance that was intended to reflect the combination of all those concerns and desires identified at that time. It went through and was approved at the planning and zoning commission level, and then just in summary, when it got to the first reading for the ordinance at the city commission level, it was, it was pulled, and essentially, the applicant, or the, the request for the public hearing was, was denied. So, the process stopped at that point. We've had some, some interest, and perhaps Commissioner Risch may want to add some additional information here, but there's been some interest in, in rekindling this, this potential ordinance, and I guess this is, this is the point of the discussion, so.
Go ahead, Commissioner Risch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ben, for the good explanation. Yeah, when I was running for city commission, I had a number of people ask me about chickens when I'd supported it. I said, "Well, I live on the south side of Bismarck. I have thirty wild turkeys in my yard at any given time. If my neighbor had four hens in a coop, I think I could live with that." So, that seemed like a reasonable thing. We had an animal advisory committee meeting about other related things, but it was brought up there, and it seemed to have good support from the members of the committee itself for chickens. So, I asked Ben to look into, or give me the, the information of what happened in twenty-twenty-one, and so he did that, and then I, I was kind of surprised it was on the agenda tonight. I didn't ask that it be put on the agenda tonight, but the chickens have come home to roost, so we can talk about it tonight. I, I think it's not a crazy idea. If you look through the stuff that Ben's team put together, they, they asked cities around the state about the issues they've had with chickens, and it's almost nothing, no, no negative issues. I bumped into the city administrator of Mandan at the mayor's breakfast, and I asked him about it, and he said, "Zero. We have no issues with the chickens. They have only like ten people that have put this together." And in fact, if you do put up a chicken coop, it could be quite costly if you look at the proposed rules and proposed ordinance. It's got to be done in a substantial way, and it's not going to be cheap. But I think it would be a positive thing for families if they wanted to do it, and I would think, what I'd like the commission to do is direct staff to once again review what we have, maybe update it, look at it, and bring it back to the commission, and I'd like to be a part of that.
Comments? Commissioner Connolly?
I remember watching the meetings from before and the back and forth, and I was in favor of it, even though the voter, the choices at that time, so I would concur with Commissioner Risch.
Mr. Mayor, an interesting thing is that there were, it was a four-to-one vote, and three out of the four Commissioners are no longer on the commission, so it might be a different take. And of course, I...
Four out of the five.
Yeah, four out of the five voted no, and I, and I think the guy that's still on the commission is warmed up to the idea.
Four out of the five people who are on that commission are gone.
Oh, yeah, four out of the five are gone, right.
Yeah.
Right, right, four out of the five are gone, so the one yes vote and one is gone... Four out of the five are gone, so the one yes vote and one is gone as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go. And there's still one guy that voted no on the commission, but I think he'll warm up to it. Give him a little time.
Commissioner Zinker, do you have any comments?
No. And no, I won't support chickens in the city. Ah, no, it's one of those things. I love it. You know what? You can do it in the ETA. I think it's fantastic. I think with a little entrepreneurial ship, somebody can partner up with the, in the city and and partner up with somebody in the ETA and have chickens and sell eggs and-
Sure.
Do all those things, because we're a great agricultural state. Have at it. When you look at the details of of the agenda item, you know, because it sparked my my intrigue-ness to read this again, you know, there's, there's less than 40 permits, at that time, might be updated now, right? We don't know that, but at the time in 2021, there's less than 40 throughout the entire state. So in my opinion, it's really not a topic for conversation. We don't, and I'm sure I'll get blasted over this, but we just don't need it within the city limits of Bismarck. We can still keep it in the ETA, and and we, for one, we do buy farm fresh eggs from a rural person. I mean, so I get it, I understand, but in my perspective, in my point of view, no chickens in the city limits, unless it's from Big Boy.
There are several areas in the city that have come, you know, the developments have covenants against it.
That's true. And and the proposed ordinance carves out parts of the cities where they wouldn't be allowed, the old ordinance from 2021. This is not a crazy idea. The sky will not fall if if we allow chickens in Bismarck, and anyway.
That's a good Chicken Little reference.
I don't know if we have consensus or not. I, I have wildlife down by my house all the time, but I don't know that I would want chickens by me, but they can't be there anyway because there's no covenants, or the covenants wouldn't permit it. So, I mean, and we're also in the midst of rewriting our land use code, and if, I don't know that would fit into that process or not, but, I mean, we certainly could-
If that's the direction-
We'd certainly run it through the stakeholder groups that we are engaging during that process. I don't know. I'm not, I'm, I have no, I have no way, I have no feelings one way or the other.
I'm fair, also fairly indifferent about chickens. I think that maybe that's a decent compromise, is that if we can work it into the discussion of the land use plan, that then maybe if we are going to talk about it, at least it, everything is cohesive. But I guess I, I haven't, I haven't, I haven't had people asking me if they can have chickens. So, I mean, I guess I could understand both points to it, so I'm-
Commissioner Zinker?
I don't think, I mean, we could go through the process and ask, but I don't want it just lump sum into the, into the new chapter 14. It's got to be a separate topic that we talk about.
And that's fair.
Yeah, yeah, because I need to convince two other people that no was a good decision.
Yeah. And I, and I don't care how we go on. I mean, I'm okay if we bring it forth as a topic, I, I just-
Well, to be fair, the ordinance would not require anyone to have chickens, so you're safe there.
And I like chickens. I'm okay with that. I do like a T-bone, though.
So, so what's the direction to give to, go ahead, Commissioner?
One thing about it is, is that it was interesting when I ran, or, or right before I was appointed, is nobody would talk about it with people at the table because it was an open meeting, but when I put in my application, I actually got a lot of calls about it to bring it back, and because they could talk to me at that point. Once I was appointed, I couldn't bring it up, that had to be the portfolio holder, so.
Well, I, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I'd like to keep the thing alive if we possibly can, and perhaps we can come up with a plan that's acceptable to at least a majority of the commission.
What, what would be the next step then, Ben? Because this is already written, does it need to be reviewed, and then we call, we go through the public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, and Commissioner Cleary. There's potentially two different paths you, we could go down. One is probably a Roberts Rules question to see if and how this, in its current form, could move forward with just calling for the public hearing and and acting on the the item in front of you. I don't know, I mean, technically by Roberts Rules, you know, a member of the, the affirmative party needs to bring this back, and as, as has been stated, most of those commissioners are no longer here, so I don't know that that's, maybe Julie has thoughts, but I don't know that that's realistic from a Roberts Rules perspective. The other option, which is probably the option I would prefer, is we just start over, we reassemble the the stakeholder group. Frankly, the framework, a lot of the research is already done, it's just getting the parties back together, figuring out if they like what's in there still, if anything should be changed. I don't think it would be a significant lift to to start this process over. All it would require is going through the public hearing process at Planning and Zoning Commission, and again at City Commission, so.
Commissioner Connolly?
I guess one thing I remember from the previous conversations and things was, our officers have a lot on their plate, and chickens aren't the easiest thing to catch once they get out.
Yep.
Could there be something added along the line? If it's the first time, maybe it's a, there's a little bit of no harm, no foul, but the second time around, sometime, some type of significant fine, and then a double attrition, then it fits more than five times, no more, sort of thing?
I think we would be open to that if that's direction you would like us to pursue. I, I, you know, I think we'd be happy to follow up with Animal Control and PD on that, on that item, so.
At least then there'd be a little bit of a checks and balance for, because there's always some of those people that aren't responsible, so to speak.
Commissioner Rish?
Well, the standards for the coops are significant. If you look through the proposed ordinance, and they have to be approved, and occasionally maybe one will get away and bye-bye, you know, let them go. I mean, I don't, I don't know what's going to happen to them, you know? Not going to cause a bunch of damage anywhere, I don't believe.
Good lord.
I mean, I don't think there's any, I don't, I don't have particular fondness for having the ordinance, but I'm not going to stand here and say we can't go through the process of the public, the public hearings. I think it would have to go through, basically start fresh. You have multiple public hearings that way, you have a community developer through planning and zoning, and then here again, you know, to think that right is there. So I'd be fine, I guess I'm okay with that.
I'm good with that.
Do you need something from us, Ben, to start that process? Do you want an motion, or?
I think if there's a consensus for us just to move forward, I think I'm sort of hearing that, so we can, we can reignite that that process, so.
Sure.
Okay.
As long as it's noted that the consensus is not unanimous, I'm okay with that.
And that is fine to note that, because I'm, I'm, I'm like 50/50.
And I mean, I get it, yeah. I don't want foul chicken either.
So, all right.
Okay, so we will move forward in reassembling that group, and Commissioner Rish, I noted you had an interest in participating, so we will ask for your participation in that, so, thank you.
Next I- Okay, next item H, let's move on to something important here, again, further importance, instead of laughing, I, I meant to say, another topic that's on the agenda.
Mayor Commissioners.
Yeah. Go ahead, Doug. This is for permission to enter into contract negotiations for strategic planning.
That's correct. Just like to give you all a brief update as to where we've been with strategic planning, and then ask permission to enter into contract negotiations. So I provided each of you a few documents. The thicker document is just the RFP that was, of the consultant that was selected, but before we get to that, if you recall, back in December, I requested permission to publish an RFP. That was published, and we received seven RFPs as a result of that at the end of January. And then on February 12th, we did some initial scoring, and based off that initial scoring, we conducted interviews on February 19th. So you have two score sheets there. The one that has some gray and yellow, that's the initial rankings that got us through the interviews, and we interviewed two consultants, and the selection committee selected the Maharanda Group. Some of you may, that may be a familiar name to some of you. They, they did, worked on our 2012 strap plan. They also worked on a succession plan prior to that. So the interview process was quite enjoyable for both of the consultants that participated, but the scores were pretty definitive on the interview process, selecting the Maharanda Group. And so with that, I would happily answer any questions you have, but I do request permission to enter into contract negotiations with Patrick Abara of the Maharanda Group.
Commissioner Zinker, you were part of that group.
Yeah, Mayor Commissioner, yes, so I was part of it because it's under one of my portfolios. The first thing I'll say is, the two that we interviewed were fantastic. It was pretty cut and dry, there were the seven, the top two, and then there's a distinct point difference between, so that's why we only interviewed two. The one thing I want to say is that the dynamics of the group that we have on our, on our committee is fantastic. Sometimes those interviews can be a little mundane, you know, when you get through the nuts and bolts of them, but between interviews and after, our group of people that we have represented us from our, our staff is a great group of people, and this will be, this group will be really fun, and I'm looking forward to it. With that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none will call roll.
Commissioner Zinker?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner Cleary?
Yes.
Commissioner Rish?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. Next item is consider request to receive legislative update and provide direction to staff. Go ahead, Jason.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'll try and keep this one pretty succinct, maybe just focus on a couple of bills. The legislature is working towards crossover, not too many bills left on either side, the Senate or the House. If I can maybe draw your attention to the sheet that was at your workstation, on the far right side of the sheet is the blue column, that's the current status of the bills. Maybe just right off the top, I do want to address House Bill 1020. This is the bill with the State Water Commission budget. This is the, this is also the bill where city engineer Gabe Shell did a great job testifying very early on in the legislature about the importance of this. Commissioner Zinker was there as well and did a nice job introducing Gabe. I'm just sorry.
They said bullets, I got it.
No, it, it was, it was, it was a great discussion, and Gabe has continued to work with Representative Nathi from the Bismarck area here, and then also Representative Swantek from the Fargo area, so definitely need to thank them as well, and Representative Martenson for certainly keeping tabs on us. Within House Bill 1020, if I can also draw your attention to the actual legislation, the bill that is drafted, if you look on page six, section 17, that is the piece that is most interesting to the city of Bismarck. There's a paragraph there that calls out, "The State Water Commission may not approve state funding for the South Bismarck Stormwater and Flood Control Project in excess of a total of $73 million without legislative approval." Mayor Commissioners, essentially, this is the notation of funding that has been requested to help support that South Bismarck flood control project. So again, many thanks for those that have helped see this through. If you're interested in any of the particular details of of the conversations and some of the work that Mr. Shell has been working on, I'm sure he'd be happy to answer those questions. Obviously, we are not in the point of celebration yet, we've got to get to crossover, but this did get a, a report back with a do-pass recommendation, and it is on the calendar. That was as of this afternoon. I did not look to see if, if anything has been taken action since that time. Further moving on, back to the sheet with the column on the right, the blue column, the next one I wanted to call out was House Bill 1028. We've talked about this one in the past, there was some concern with this, that it would restrict the construction manager at risk project development. That particular bill has been defeated. Other bills, 1176, obviously, that's the one that we've spent quite a bit of time talking about. That is the bill that would have the 3% cap on property tax collections and ultimately general fund budgets. No final action on that one, however, it has received a do-pass recommendation, and it is on the House calendar. Others that I wanted to call to your attention, House Bill 1513, this was one where staff provided testimony in opposition. This would have given property owners two and a half years' time to repair sidewalks. Our concern there was having a known trip hazard in the public right-of-way for two and a half years puts a pretty big liability on us without any means to cause that repair. That was defeated in the House. If you flip over to House Bill 1517, I need to call out, I made an error in the column that says Bismarck position, I had written in oppose. We took a position of support. Unfortunately, that bill failed. That was one of the bills relating to-
1570?
1570, 1570. That was a bill that would have created additional tax on tobacco. That failed the House 32 to 52, and nine non-voting, for anybody doing the math at home. On the next page, Senate Bill 2030, this was defeated. This was a bill that had set aside funds to address some of the homeless issues in the community. In listening to the floor discussion on this particular bill, the senators felt that many of the concerns that were identified in this bill were successfully addressed in Senate Bill 2014, which is the industrial commission's budget, which that one did seek approval. I know that was one that we were interested in seeing move through. That was a result of the governor's, former Governor Burgum's efforts to address housing earlier this summer, which I participated in as well. Those are all the bills on the list that I wanted to draw to your attention. Before we're done, I wanted to stop and see if you had any questions on these, and if not, I do have one more that I'd like to bring up.
Commissioner Zinker?
Mayor, Commissioners, so Jason, you said on 2030, they referenced 2014?
That is correct.
So I don't see 2014 on our list unless I missed it.
It is not on our list, Commissioner Zinker, because it's the industrial commission's bill, and it-
So could, I don't, could you just keep tabs on that for us?
Yes, I, I read through that one, and much of that particular bill deals with Bank of North Dakota.
Sure.
So I will add that one to the list and keep track on it as it crosses over.
Awesome. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Jason, so the funding, the proposed $10 million funding might survive in the House Bill 2014?
It is potential. I'd have to go through and and look at all the language that's in 2014. I didn't have time to do that this afternoon as I was listening to the recorded testimony from the floor session.
I wouldn't say that the dollar-for-dollar amount that's in this bill, but there's something in the other industrial commission bill.
Yep. There were comments, Mayor and Commissioners, there were comments on the Senate floor that some of the senators felt that the language in 2030 was duplicative and maybe not necessary based on existing staff abilities and information known about the the situation. I think some of the monies that were identified in Senate Bill 2030 would have promoted a study, and based on the information that the stakeholder committee gathered this summer through the work of Governor Burgum's initiative and the other staff information, I think they felt that it wasn't quite necessary to fund that study.
Okay. Anything else? Commissioner Connolly?
I know at the last meeting, we talked about 2208, and 2208 was a decent bill, except for two clauses, and it would have, those two clauses would have really restricted everybody at a local government subdivision to represent the citizens that vote for them. And speaking for myself, not as a city position, when I gave testimony on it, I said, "If you take the two clauses out, consider passing the bill," and they just defeated it outright. But just food for thought as people go up and try to make sure we have that ability to represent all the citizens. Just side note.
Mayor and Commissioners, I guess if I may, just for the, the viewing and listening audience, Senate Bill 2208 dealt with provisions including requiring cities and counties receiving grants, submit detailed reports, and there was also, the bill defines essential infrastructure projects for municipalities, and effectively, if I understood it right, it would have restricted cities and counties' abilities to use prairie dog funds if they were in opposition of essential infrastructure projects. So that, as Commissioner Connolly noted, that bill was defeated, Senate Bill 2208. Mayor and Commissioners, if I may, if if you don't have any other questions on the list that we've been working from, I would like to briefly discuss Senate Bill 2307. This is- This is a bill that did receive support in the Senate, and the language is in front of you. This language, in addition to the language in front of you, there's also a second two-page letter that was distributed by the Library Foundation, Friends of the Bismarck Public Library, and the Library Board of Directors. Senate Bill 2307 deals with materials that would be deemed obscene or explicit in public libraries and in public school libraries. And if I understand the bill the way it's written today, it would enable a citizen who has a concern with a particular piece of material in the library to request that particular piece be put in a separate area inaccessible to anyone under the age of 18. If that request is not honored, the individual could then also request, if I understood right, the county state's attorney to review the content of that book and deem whether or not it would be appropriate to leave on the general shelves of the public, or to be put aside in a locked cabinet. If I can draw your attention to page six, I guess this is the part that could cause some concern for public librarians, where it talks about potential penalties that could result if the state's attorney deems the material inappropriate and the library not acting accordingly. As you know, this is a bill that we have not discussed before. However, I assure you that the Library Board of Directors and obviously Friends of the Library are well aware of this. I can tell you from the testimony that was submitted online, there are a great deal of people across the state of North Dakota that are very interested in this particular bill. I'm not necessarily asking for direction from you tonight, however, I did want to shine a light on this and bring it to your attention, and would be happy to add it to the list, or provide any sort of support, feedback, more information, whatever your direction may be. Again, no, no ask here, just more of an opportunity to talk about it publicly.
Commissioners? Commissioner Cleary?
Thanks, Jason. I, we haven't talked about this bill this session, but there was one that had a lot of similar language in it that got vetoed at the previous legislature. We did take a stance on that one. I personally would prefer to take an opposed stance on this one. From the city perspective, I think that like, this language with the state's attorney, I mean, they're asking for that to be escalated, where the state's attorney is essentially doing the librarian's job, when it's deemed that the librarian isn't doing their job. And I just frankly feel like it's a local issue that is already being dealt with. Our library and every other library in the state already has policies and procedures in place. Our librarians at the Bismarck Public Library have master degrees in library, like sciences. They are fully capable of doing their jobs. Understandably, this isn't in the laundry list of bills that we're looking at. It's a pretty niche issue, but personally, it's a hill I could die on, for sure. So I, it was frustrating to watch. I watched most of the commentary on it, and it's a lot of, I think that the purpose of the bill is to keep pornography away from children, but the people who are pushing it, there isn't a lot of concrete examples that that's happening at libraries. So it's, it's a frustrating thing to watch personally, but then from a city standpoint, I think it's kind of taking away that local control that like, we are already dealing with, and we already have policies in place. And I think the city of Bismarck is capable of handling it without this type of state law. So that would be my take on it, but that's mine.
Anybody else? Commissioner Risch?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thanks, Jason, for bringing this up, but I have a great deal of confidence in our librarian and the library board and those folks. I go through the library, I don't see anything offensive jumping out at me. It's, it's, they're looking for a problem here that doesn't exist. They're trying to address a problem that doesn't exist, in my view, and I think the city should oppose it.
Anyone else?
I can, to just to add, Commissioner Risch, because I did hold the portfolio for a little bit, and held it during the last session when this was a discussion. Like, not only, like you said, you walk through the library, it's not a problem that you're seeing, but if it were, the library already has policies in place where like, if you were to walk in there and see a book that you don't want kids seeing in view of children, you can, there's already policies in place. You can take that to the library, to the board, to the director, like, there's already, like, again, we already have a solution. So like, it's just not necessary.
Any other comments? I concur, I think we can oppose it. All right, is there anything else, Jason?
No, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for the discussion and the direction. I will add that one to the list and report back in two weeks after crossover.
Okay, and thank you. Before we get to other business, I failed to do this to start the meeting, and I should have, but the executive session that was noted on the agenda has been withdrawn. It's been withdrawn, temporarily at least. So we're to other business. Commissioner Zinko?
Mayor, Commissioners, other business. So I'm sure this, this will be a topic of great debate when this comes to us later on this year, but the Tyler Parkway Extension has a public input meeting on March 3rd from 6:00 to 8:00 at, 6:00 to 8:00 at Elk Ridge Elementary School. Gabe, did I get that right?
Sir.
I love having Gabe as my backup. Guy's smart. So I just want to get that out there. That's my portfolio. That is a big project for the city of Bismarck, which is a critical path for us to make sure that Northwest Bismarck is, traffic is moving efficiently, so.
Commissioner Conley?
King on the words that you mentioned, Commissioner Zinko, because some people have asked me, the actual flyer on it says, "Public information meeting," and that's some of the discussion that came up during the, like, riverfront comment, there's a significant difference. Is it truly public input? Because there's a lot of people that want to express opinions. And so if it's public information, they're feeling like it's going to be a one-way conversation. So if it's input, that's a different, I mean, it's a different context. So is that what it is, is public input, or is it public information like the flyer?
It is input. I'll check my flyer.
Okay.
The intent is to get input, I mean, to gather information.
And part of the reason why is, prior to my appointment and things, that's been a topic for a lot of people, and I've sat with some of the neighborhood area, even as long as seven years ago on this, when it was 15th Street Northwest, so.
Do we have any other business? We stand adjourned.